Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, June 3rd, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Use it until the balance is depleted. Dave or Sandy, any comments?
Yeah, go ahead and use that credit.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. That concludes unfinished business, no new business tonight. Comments from board members?
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:04 PM. As soon as we reset, we will begin the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting. Good evening and welcome to the second meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, June 3rd, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Sueard.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, May 20th, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have 28 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $1,157,879.93. Floor is open for any questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated June 3rd, 2019, in the amount of $1,157,879.93.
Make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. Move to unfinished business, we have none, new business, we have five items, actually. First up, request to hire part-time DPW. Brad?
Good evening, Board. Dear Board, it is my recommendation to the Board of Works that the city hires Zeke Brown as a seasonal part-time worker at the Department of Public Works. This position will pay $15.09 per hour, will not exceed 58 hours per bi-weekly pay. Mr. Brown will be working during the summer months before he leaves for college in the fall. There's money in the MVH budget to fund this position. If approved, Mr. Brown will start on Tuesday, June 4th.
Floor is open for any questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
Now, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Director's request to hire Zeke Brown as a seasonal part-time worker.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Request to hire part-time DPW.
Dear Board, it is my recommendation to the Board of Works that the city hire Kobe Simmons as a part-time worker at the Department of Public Works. This position will pay $15.09 per hour, will not exceed 58 hours per bi-weekly pay. Mr. Simmons will be filling the part-time position vacated by Dale Ellis back on April 26th. There's money in the sewage works budget to fund this position. If approved, Mr. Simmons will start on Tuesday, June 4th.
Thank you. Floor is open for any questions or comments?
None.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Director's request to hire Kobe Simmons as a part-time worker for DPW.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Next up, promotion within the Fire Department. Chief?
Dan.
Thank you.
Mayor and Board, I come before you today to ask for the approval, promotion of Randall Hadler to the rank of Captain. If approved, Randall will fill the open position on B shift and be assigned to the merit rank of Captain. Randall completed all aspects of the promotional testing process and was approved by the Beach Grove Merit Board. His base salary will be $2,091.52 per pay period. This increase of position pays in our 2019 budget. With your approval, the effective date will start next payroll on June 15th, 2019.
Thank you. Floor is open for any questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
Now, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Chief's request to promote Randall Hadler to the merit rank of Captain.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries.
I'll have Randall come up, say a couple words, and we'll have his wife come up and pin him his new badge. Randall came to Beach Grove Fire Department October of 2003. Randall graduated from Methodist Hospital Paramedic Program and was applied and received a position at Lawrence Township Fire Department. We're very fortunate that Randall left Lawrence Township at the time, came to Beach Grove, and has worked for us for just almost 16 years now. Randall?
Mr. Mayor, Board, thank you. I can honestly say, this is probably one of the hardest things I've done. My wife, my sons are here with me, my family. It was a very stressful process, a lot of good candidates went out for it, I was fortunate enough to finish first, and I'm fortunate enough to be promoted to this position. And, Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, you did hire me.[413.12][413.12](Laughter) And I remember when you did give me my interview, you said, "The opportunities within the Beach Grove Fire Department are numerous, as long as you're willing to apply yourself." I think I've applied myself, and I look forward to the future.
Hang on. Melanie, wait a minute, step up to the mic.[460.12][460.12](Laughter) You know, this couldn't happen to a better guy, to begin with, but I always had a kick out of them boys coming into the fire station. And I, every, almost every time I seen those kids, I would ask one question, Melanie, you remember?
Yes.
What was it?
They were giving me a hard time.
And what would happen if they said yes?
If you paid them a dollar.[489.02][489.02](Laughter)
I told them to keep up the good work.[492.62][492.62](Laughter)
I'll never forget that as long as I breathe. It was so good.
They remember that as well.
Yeah, yeah. They was just youngsters. Look at them now. Congratulations. Last order, or next order of business is environmental restriction, Beach Grove Police Department. Mo, did you want to comment on this?
I'd like to.
On the environmental restriction?
I don't know.
No, we could do it. The ERS is doing the environmental monitoring of the police station, and their latest test, they have to continue to do environmental remediation, continue to test quarterly. So, they have asked to enter into a new covenant. It's getting better, but we still have a long ways to go. So, Board, tonight, I'll ask that you approve an environmental restriction concerning the Beach Grove Police Department. DPW, I think, is all done, if I'm not mistaken. But, the folks here at the Police Department, they're going to have to do some testing for quite a few years before it will finally be done. So, Greg, did you have any comment on this?
No. Upon approval, I'll execute the agreement and tell you my signature and we'll be done with it.
Yeah, this, they did some quarterly testing that we paid for tonight, and they'll be back three more times this year. And we just have to stay on top of it, and we'll probably visit this issue again with further covenances as time goes by. But, pulling the tank out and cleaning up environmentally is good, but we did exactly what we should have done. So, tonight, I'll ask the Board to enter into the environmental restrictive covenant concerning the Police Department, and file it, have it recorded and file it. So, I'll need a motion.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. This is, this document for the general public is, and there's a map, there's a map in here that shows the restricted area, and construction in that area would be prohibited. So, that has to be recorded, and that's one of the reasons we can't add on to the Police Department, especially going back towards the woods, so.
I see what you want to say. So, this is a contamination that happened years and years and years ago, correct? And I think it's very responsible of our city that we take action and we protect ourselves against this situation, so.
I don't know when they put the tank in, took it out three or four years ago, but we did the same thing at DPW, and it's getting much better, so I'm happy with it. We just have to keep working at it. We have one more business, new business tonight, that was not on the agenda. This showed up as an email today, and it's the Eagles wanting to do an event on June the 8th, which is Saturday. So, I ask that, if Dan could read this into the record. And again, it's not on the agenda.
Remember that we are having our annual Hogs for Paul's Charity Ride Adoption Fair at the Beach Grove Eagles this Saturday, June the 8th. We would like to be able to block the road off in the morning to park bikes, and then again, when the bikes return, in order to park on the street. The road will be opened back up when the bikes leave at 11:00 AM. We will also need barricades and totes. Hopefully, the rain holds off this year. We usually have 70-plus bikes that attend this ride. Thank you, Denise and John Bell.
Comments from board members?
Well, this police and DPW don't have the extra stuff.
I sent it over this morning, and I think the police got back with me, they didn't have an issue with it. I didn't hear from the Fire Department. This is something that we do annually. They just need to get it in a little bit sooner, so we can get it on the agenda for them. I might help them, but we have to, they have to do a little better job. Any other questions, Dave?
No, I have none.
Motion to approve the Eagles' request this Saturday, June the 8th.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. That concludes new business, comments from board members?
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:17 PM. We convene our City Council meeting this evening at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Greg, do you sign this?
I don't know, I will.
Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting this evening. My name is Dennis Buckley, City, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. At this time, we will convene our Common Council meeting for Monday, June 3rd, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy, Templeton, Councilman-at-Large.
Jim Brooks, Council-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Peter Mascari, Council, District 2.
Elizabeth Lamping, Council, District 1.
Kevin Day, District 4.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We were supposed to have a middle school girl softball recognition, but I think that's going to happen in July. So, we'll move to the upcoming Grand Prix of Beach Grove. I'll ask Mayor's spokesperson to come up and, and give us an update on the race. Dylan is, or Dolan is a intern this summer in the Mayor's office, and he just finished one at the Legislature, and he's a senior at IU this year, and he's working this summer with me. So, Dolan, come on up and talk about the race. And while he's talking, Council, there's a drawing of the course right sitting on that chair.
Thank you, Mayor Buckley. Good evening, everybody. The first Grand Prix, Beach Grove, is going to be held this year, June 16th, at Beach Grove High School. This will be a Southern Indiana Racing Association event. It will be a go-karting event that will showcase drivers' talents, and their ages are 5 to 70. So, it's a widespread age difference there. Races will start at 10:00 AM and conclude by 5:00 PM of that day. Admission to the event will begin at 8:00 PM, or 8:00 AM, and will be free of charge as well. There will be a pit pass, if you'd like to purchase that, though, and that will be charged. There will be, there will not be any bleachers, so bringing a chair is highly recommended if you'd like to sit during the event. Race control will be located on the northeast side of Hornet Park Community Center. The inside of the community center and the high school will be closed to the public during the day of the race. There will be food vendors and food trucks located in the parking lot of the community center, though. Parking will be permitted in the grassy field on the south end of the football field, but there's no parking at the nearby churches or apartment complexes.
Oh, wow.
There will also be no parking on Horner Avenue, east of the apartment, or east of the apartment complex, or on Butler Avenue, north of Adelaide Street. Both of those streets will also be closed at 3:00 PM the day before the race starts. The event has been made possible by sponsors Franciscan Health, De Mechanical, Central Security Communications, V Surfaces, and Walmart. All remaining funds will be donated to the Beach Grove Police Department, Shop With A Cop, the David Moore Food Pantry, and Noble Industries, and then other charities as well. This is an exciting event that's going to take place. I know personally, I'm very excited being a race fan, and May just ending, this will be great for the city. Thank you.
Any questions?
I got one. What time will they be setting up?
They'll be setting up around 3:00 the day before. They'll start to block off the roads and begin to set things up.
There's Relay for Life at the same day, right?
It's over with at 3:00.
On Saturday.
They'll need the roads open.
Yeah.
Can't block the roads yet. Till everybody moves out.
There's sensitivity for that, Jim.
Okay.
There's a wedding at Hornet Park as well.
Hey, Dennis, is there any way we could turn that around, so that the crowd could see it?
Sure, I can, if you want me to.
I think it's going to be a really, really cool event.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. Because I, yeah, it's in here somewhere. Any questions for Dolan?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dolan.
We will.
Mayor, I was going to, well, I've already told you, but Chris Duffer has asked to be excused tonight, he's not fit.
Okay. We will suspend the City Council meeting temporarily, in order to hold a public hearing for the OKRA grant. And at this time, I'll call Mike Kleinpeter to the podium for comment. Mike?
Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Kleinpeter with Kleinpeter Consulting Group. I'm an OKRA-certified grant administrator. The notice of the public hearing was published in the May 22nd edition of the Indianapolis Star. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to discuss the city's application for grant funding through the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. We're applying for a Main Street Revitalization Grant in the amount of $452,280. The city will be contributing a local match of $137,020. The local match is made up of $5,000 from the General Fund, $37,500 from the Redevelopment Commission, and $94,520 from the business owners. The money from the business owners has already been deposited into the city's account for the MSRP project. We submitted our proposal to OKRA on May 3rd. Site visit was conducted this morning with Mayor, Mr. Kaufman, Matt Wakefield with OKRA, myself, and Ernie Holtry with OKRA. We walked the downtown, looked at some of the buildings, and talked about the application, which is due, due on June 28th. We want to make sure that citizens are informed of the project, have an opportunity to voice any concern or support for the project. Funds available for the Main Street Revitalization Program through OKRA, it is a competitive grant application process, only so many are funded. I often get asked, "What happens if we don't get funded?" We think we have a competitive application, but if we are not funded, we can do two public hearings and come right back in in the November round. So, this project will result in no displacement, that's some required language I've got to read. If you want to know, award announcements are going to be on August 15th, 2019. OKRA, if you go to www.ocla.in.gov, and you can click Subscribe Now, and they issue a press release that morning, so you'll find out, when everybody else finds out, if we're awarded or not. So, with that, now I would normally turn it over to Pat, but Pat was unavailable this evening. So, at this point, I'll tell a little bit, everybody in the crowd, about how we got here. In August of 2017, the city was awarded an OKRA grant to do a downtown revitalization plan. That plan was completed in September of 2018. In that plan, architectural renderings were done on 12 buildings within the grant. Six of those 12 buildings are still involved in the project today. Some of the businesses dropped out for various reasons. Two additional buildings were added here at the beginning of the year. So, therefore, in our final application, we're submitting to OKRA, there are eight buildings total listed. I'm going to go through and name each building. Napoli Villa in 758 Main Street, T Room of Rustic Roots, 622 Main Street, 620 Main Street, Eckstein Shoe Repair, 617 Main Street, Masonic Lodge, 423 Main Street, that's the old Meat Market Building, I think it's going to be the Fifth Avenue Bar and Grill, is what I've been told. 407 to 411 Main Street, the Hen Thorne Agency, 302 to 304 Main Street, Mater Design, and 220 Main Street, the Studio, are the buildings that are still involved in this grant application. A little bit about some of the improvements that are going to be made, there's seven or eight things listed on each building, I just pulled three, or two or three, just to kind of move us along here. But, if you're a business owner out there, and I just mentioned three things, you are got a lot more in there, it's just, I just highlighted a couple for us. So, we'll start, 758 Main Street, they're going to get an energy-efficient storefront, metal shading, metal shading canopy, lighting and repointing, and a new sign. 622 Main Street, the T Room is going to get an energy-efficient storefront, awnings, masonry repointing, steel lintel replacements. 620 Main Street, Eckstein Shoe Repair, masonry repairs and repointing, a new awning, energy-efficient storefront and door, and lighting improvements. 617 Main Street, the Masonic Lodge, and new sign, replacement lighting, coping or new flashing on the facade. 423 Main Street, there's going to be a new operable folding storefront window, new lighting, improved side entrances and new awnings. 407 to 411 Main Street, the Hen Thorne Agency, the handicap, there's going to be a handicap ramp put in. They're going to reopen the courtyard by removing the roof section and middle section, and other various site improvements. Mater Design, 302 to 304 Main Street, we're going to have new energy-efficient storefront, metal shading canopies, masonry repointing, and new lighting. And the last building, 220 Main Street, the Studio, is going to have energy-efficient windows, masonry repointing, new signs, and awning. That's a very quick summary of just kind of high level, what we're looking to do. During our meeting this morning, it was discussed about how unique the City of Beach Grove is. Most Main Streets do not have as much residential people living as close to the Main Street as we do. I showed OKRA a picture of our downtown, and if you look, there are hundreds, six, seven, I don't know the exact number, hundreds of residents within a two or three-block radius that could walk to the Main Street. So, they thought that was a unique feature we had, that most communities don't have. So, with that, I will, I'll have, give it back to the Mayor to open it for public comment tonight.
Thanks, Mike. I'll defer to the City Attorney. Anyone sign up to speak?
Not on the OKRA grant issue.
Okay. Is there anybody who would like to speak concerning the OKRA grant?
I had one question, Mayor. So, I, as you said, it's just 5,000 from the General Fund that are in, and the remaining amount is coming from business owners, like a small business, or so, from R.C.?
5,000 from the General Fund, which covers the environmental review we did in fact. $37,500 from the Redevelopment Commission, and $94,520 from the business owners.
It sounds like not many businesses are involved. How many, is it less than 50% are even involved?
So, there were, Jim, you want to come up here and take this, on how we got started? And I know they next stop Beach Grove and marketed to a bunch of the business owners.
When we started a year and a half ago, I think that we counted, there's about 125 business locations available in our Main Street area. Yeah, so not even close to, I mean, it's a very small fraction of it. Some of these buildings have been there for a very long time, have a big, big presence on Main Street. But, yeah, so we had several public hearings, sound emails, and Facebook messages, and talked to people on Main Street to get them, see if they wanted to be involved. That's where some people kind of fell off, they showed interest beginning, but then just weren't able to come up with it. But, yeah, about 125-ish for our Main Street area, which is 8th to Emerson, north and south, a block or two on Emerson, 2nd, and then it includes every intersecting road from there. So, yeah, so it's not near that amount, but people that were interested, they showed interest.
Was it a matter of, like, they had to pay something to be involved, and that's why they didn't?
That's, well, some of them. Some of them just didn't see the benefit of it. Some of the buildings didn't need any work done, or they felt they didn't need any work done. Some of the building owners just couldn't do it. Some of the property owners weren't interested. The businesses were, but the property owners were not.
Let's see, the only, I think, I've just got one last thing to say, and I'm done.
I think you can say this at the start.
Next stop, Beach Grove, will be sending out a survey via link, via Survey Monkey. If you do get a chance to take that survey, one of the questions ask if we asked a survey about our downtown. So, that's really to get those points that we talked about at this morning's meeting. So, keep your eye out for that. It's going to be a very basic survey, it's going to say, "How often do you come downtown? What kind of shape do you think the buildings are in?" I mean, it's going to be very just high level, six questions, take all of maybe two minutes of your time.
If no one is interested in coming up and speaking on the OKRA grant, then we will close the public hearing and go back to the council agenda. Council Agenda Number 5, reading of the minutes and approval, May the 6th, 2019. Council, you should have the minutes of the previous meeting in your packet. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
Dan, I commend your thoroughness with this minutes.
Well.
I think this is the thickest one I've ever seen.
Well, they've been thicker before, but anyway, I appreciate the comment, but let me say that we had a hearing for a BZA.
Yeah.
And I know they're appealing that, and so, everything has to be in there.
Yeah.
The last time we did this, we actually had to hire someone to transcribe, word for word, what was in there. So, that's a reason for the thoroughness.
No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next up, item number six, public comment. Greg?
Yes, I think Joe Calderon, you want to speak at the hearing, opening hearing.
Just on the re-zoning, Greg.
Very well, okay.
First of all, I want to say it's a shame that it's only eight businesses that are involved in that grant, that's really a shame. But, what I, Kim Quick at 1005 Main Street. The last meeting, someone, one of the people got up and said that, to the City Council members, to remember that you work for the citizens and not for the mayor. members, to remember that you work for the citizens and not for the mayor. So with that in mind, I just want to ask you about the letter that Joe Wofla sent certified to each of you. I just wanted to ask you if each of you read it? And secondly, have you shared any of the information with the citizens that you represent?
I read the letter. I think the timing was quite convenient for Joe.
The what?
The timing. I don't think there was much truth in the letter, that's my opinion.
Did you speak with him?
I didn't really feel the need to.
Anybody else, did you read it? I mean, I asked Joe if anyone had, you know, spoken to him about it, and he said no, so I was just wondering if you read it.
I think Joe had approached each one of us to talk about it.
It was brought up before the election.
He never contacted me at all.
I think it's a little bit different, the information.
I had the same information, I had both of them from the last election, and...
Do you have a public comment? Okay.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else that has not signed up, want to speak?
We'll move to committee reports, A, B, C. Ashley?
Actually, I do have another further comment on the previous statement. Joe stated this happened in 2015, I believe, in the letter. It's 2019. Why wasn't this brought up four years ago, in total election here?
Who was?
Okay, I'll reach out.
So we had our alcohol beverage meeting today, we had one on the docket. Before I talk about what was on the docket, I wanted to kind of explain about the process of our meetings for the alcohol beverage. The committee is made up by, you have, your local board is the state excise officer, you have a couple of Marion County representatives, and then each of the donut cities have their representatives, so we have Beech Grove, Speedway, and Lawrence. And so who votes on Beech Grove stuff is myself, and then the Marion County, and then the state excise officer. When we go to these meetings, well, probably about a couple weeks before, we get sent out a notice saying who's going to be, who's going to be brought up, what business is going to be brought up, so we have an idea. When I go to the meetings, that's when we find out if that business has any violations, or what that violation was, what that report looks like, so that's when I get that information. And then I take that information, and I bring it back to all of you, and share back what was said and what happened at that meeting. So I just forward on that information. Now, a lot of times with the liquor permits, they are approved for between one year to two year, and that goes based on their violations, you know, if they've had any other issues, what that might look like. Generally, everybody gets a one-year renewal, as long as there's no issues. Now, when they start having violations and there's issues, I've been, I feel like I've been pretty proactive with the businesses and trying to figure out the problem, ask them what their solutions are, and, you know, figure out a good plan of action so we can prevent this from happening. A lot of the businesses have our state excise officers' information on speed dial, and we'll call them whenever there's an issue, or if they have any questions before they do something. For example, Beach Bank Brewery, they were wanting to add in their patio, so we had to make sure that it was in the guidelines of the ATC, but Beach Bank's a little bit different because it does fall into a federal entity because it's a brewery. So, they're a little bit different, but for the most part, they all have the same guidelines. So, so that kind of explains our process on how the A, B, C works. After we make the approval or the denial, then it goes up to the local, or the state board. They're the ones that will have that final decision. At any point in time, the business can dispute those, and I know Jim Brooks and Dan McMillan were both on this, does that, I mean, do you guys have anything else that you might want to add?
No, a lot of what you said is about it.
So, a lot of ti, we have no control over what is being brought up, we just approve it, yea or nay, and they want to have the input of the community on these decisions, that's why they have the local representatives that's participating. So, is there any other questions, comments?
So you just are stating the facts, if there's a violation, you're stating the facts that there was a violation, you don't have anything to do with, if the viola, I mean, if there was a, if it was, I don't know the words, remedy, but you're stating the facts that there was a violation, and that's what your job is to do.
And the, and the thing, though, too, with this, the permits run for 12 months, okay? If there's a violation at the beginning of that 12-month, it's not going to be heard until that following renewal time period. So, those violations very well could, could have been paid and taken care of and settled, but it's still going to be heard regardless of the matter of that violation at that 12-month period, and it's up to the board on whether or not they want to renew that license or not. So, so yeah.
Actually, I, one comment. The citizens of Beech Grove, whether you're in favor or opposed to any license, you have the ability to remonstrate or speak in favor at these meetings, so if you ever feel like, you know, something's bad and you want it addressed, you can do that, or if you think they're doing a good job.
Mm-hmm, fair, thank you, yes.
Another thing also, if there is a violation against a business owner, the business owner has the right to be there at that meeting and explain it's been taken care of and everything. And if they don't show up, then it could be, most of the time it's continued until they do show up.
And they'll continue it up to three times, so the third time will be, they will be sent out a certified letter by the state excise officer. Generally, I think they get two notifications, they get one from the state, and then they get one from the excise officer. And I will have to brag, I think our excise officer, Officer Bell, is absolutely amazing. He's helped a lot of the businesses on Main Street with their liquor permits, and has been readily available for any questions that they might have. And I know quite a few of the businesses have him on speed dial, so to answer any questions that he might have, okay?
I have a question, Ashley.
Yes, ma'am.
So evidently, last month, you announced a business owner had expired permits and so forth, and that business owner, you announced it here in the council meeting, that business owner had proof that he was no longer, he was not, he had documentation, so was that just like things crossing in the mail there?
No, that was going back to his, at that, for that time period, that 12-month period, his violation happened on 417-18. He had it, he had it paid and everything, it was, he applied for the new permit, for that gaming permit, on 423-18. The permit was then issued on 414-18. So it was paid, but it was after the violation, but again, it's still reined in that 12-month period, so regardless, we're still going to hear that violation for this renewal period, because it fell in during that time period of his permit.
So even though he paid up, he's still on the list?
Uh-huh, yeah, and it was paid on 322-19. So, and all of these can be, if you need any documents, you can contact the ATC, and they would be more than happy to give you that information, and all those reports, and that's through the state. I have no control over anything, Beech Grove has no control over anything, it's all through the state, okay? So, going back to that, we had a contin, the second continued hearing for Night Owls, and we had to continue it, so we'll have our third hearing on, in July, the first Monday in July, so, so yeah. We had to continue it because the owner did not show up, so, and it makes it hard when the owners don't show up on these, so we, because we can't ask these questions, so. Any questions?
It could be the owner or somebody, representative.
The business.
The business.
Yep. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hopefully that gives a better idea about what this process looks like, and how it works and everything, and I hate getting up here and reporting these, because we have so many resources available in the city that can help our businesses, and these are important violations, so that can affect the businesses. All right, all right, thank you so much for your time, and have a wonderful evening.
Was there another report for this, is this?
Yeah, we had the second hearing today, and it was continued.
But no new violations from anybody?
Right now, no.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
You should have Greenscape Commission, and you should have compliance in your packet. Financial, Dan?
There are no bond or lease payments to report for May. We are short in the general fund, however, in June, that will reverse itself as we keep all our tax money, due to the fact that we no longer get a tax anticipation warrant. As a city, we are now living within our means. Previous Clerk Treasurer, Chris Duffer, started reducing the amount of the tax anticipation warrant when he was in office, and I continued until it was no longer needed. Repeatedly, I was told by the city's financial advisor that it couldn't be done, and we did it two or three years ago. The office now uses a financial advisor for very little. We complete the budget and annual report within the office with very little resources from any consultants. We understand the value of a dollar and how hard our citizens work to earn that. The stormwater fund balance, $372,502.07, thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated at no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, debt service, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beechgrove.com. The corporate bank account, as of Friday, $2,267,020.34. The utility bank account, $984,170.36. We have four other accounts, they'll be listed on the city website, but we use normally the corporate or the utility bank account on a daily basis. As always, if you have any questions, my door is always open. Thank you respectfully submitted Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Questions for the clerk? Last report, public safety. Deputy Chief?
I won't take a whole lot of time, I think over the past few months, we've kind of gotten away of, from highlighting some of the stuff on that report, and I don't think that the public really appreciates or understands what these officers are doing on a daily basis. And I, I don't do any social media, none at all, for many different reasons, so, but I, most of my guys probably don't want me to talk about some of the stuff they do, but I'm just going to highlight some of the stuff from May that my guys are involved in. And then I also have a, if you permit me, I have a questionnaire that one of my majors put out to the department, it's actually 18 months old, but it'll kind of maybe bring to light some of the stuff that these guys do on a daily basis. I don't have the date, but middle shift officers responded to a domestic on 5th Street, a female reported to have been battered by the male. He was located in the 600 block of Albany, he resisted arrest, he kicked and spit on the officers, some of the officers had minor pain from being kicked. Middle shift officers made a drunk driving arrest, then the driver became a resister. We did have our fallen officer blood drive, and we had exactly four participants in that, two of which myself and the chief, and another guy who was working, and one other officer. 511, the AT&amp;T store was robbed at gunpoint by three black males, they took phones, which we've been having a lot of those, on the South Side, East Side of Indianapolis, getting hit really hard on those, and we're not sure if it's a syndicate or whatever, we're working with IMPD on that, we'll get to that in a minute. We had another robbery at the Marathon on South Emerson, we had an armed robbery at the Speedway, at Churchman and Emerson. We had another robbery on the 4900 side, the east side of the street, which would be IMPD. Sergeant Brunner, who was patrolling, observed them at the Firestone Building in the parking lot, and apprehended those three. So that was three of the sus, three of the group that's hitting cellphone stores. We sent five officers to the DC, to DC for the Fallen Officers Memorial, we did probation Our new officer, Brock Lavelle, is in the back, he just got out of the academy, he's in his second week of training, so he's here, that's good. Your fire department almost burnt down, but the, I mean, sorry, the police department almost burnt down, but the fire department saved the day. So, it's turned out, it wasn't that big of a deal, it was a belt on one of our air compressors that runs the AC, so the guys didn't have AC for a while.
That was your solution right there.
I wasn't very happy about it, but...
They did a great job, too.
So, 526, Officer McGuire observed suspects from a robbery, another cellphone store, gave chase, and three suspects fled on foot, two suspects were tased, and the third was caught by K-9. No injury to the police officers, however, Officer McGuire's police vehicle sustained a little over $3,000 worth of damage. And then, reports of shots fired into a house on 9th Street, the detectives are investigating that, there were no injury, and no one saw anything. And so, I also, we could go back and highlight other stuff from past months, where we had a police chase that did damage to four police cars, causing over $35,000 worth of damage. What's interesting is, you know, the murder that we don't talk about, that happened at the beginning of April, that was guys, they weren't dispatched on that, they were out patrolling, and when Officer Huffman came upon the scene, he actually thought he had a drunk driver, because we had another officer in the area that was there investigating a hit-and-run, and he saw the vehicle in the ditch, and it was on fire, and he actually ran up, and it wasn't until him, and I believe it was Captain Ferrer, pulled the victim out of the driver's seat as the car's on fire, that they realized that the, there was another victim in the backseat, who luckily hadn't been shot, and actually pulled him out, and it wasn't until they got him out that they realized that the victim had been shot. And so that was just guys out doing what they do. My guys do a great job, and I know most of the public appreciates what they do. So, to this questionnaire real quick, so the major put it out, we had, at the time, we had 32 officers, only 29 responded, and I wish the other three would have, because I know that they have over 30 years on the department, but when they get 30 years on, sometimes they, they don't want to do these little questionnaires, but he did it just because he thought it'd be interesting. So the first question was, how long have you been a police officer? And the average of those 29 was 15.6 years, this is 18 months ago. How long have you worked for this agency? 14.6 years. How many years you have in perf? That's not that interesting. Have you ever been in a vehicle pursuit? 100% of your officers have been in a vehicle pursuit. Have you ever deployed your taser at a suspect? 83% at that time had. Six, have you ever deployed chemical spray at a suspect? 72, oh, sorry, 66%. Have you ever been injured on duty requiring medical attention? 72%, yes. Number eight, have you fired any, oh, sorry, have you ever fired any firearm at a suspect, excluding less lethal? excluding less lethal? Eight, that was the question right, 7%. Number nine, has a suspect ever fired a firearm at you? 24% of our officers have been fired at. And number 10, have you ever had a moment on duty when you said, "I almost shot him or her"? 83% of your officers have been in a situation like that. These guys are out there. They're protecting the citizens. They're working. They're doing their job. They love what they do, so if you see one of them out there, thank them. And just to highlight some of the stuff on the activity report, year-to-date, we've had, we're a little down, I think it's because of the weather. We've stopped 1,024 vehicles. We've had 2,700, this is through April, this does not include May. 6,800 total responses, made 314 arrests, and done 609 incident reports. So these guys are out there, and they're, they are doing their job, and I don't think that we, maybe me, as an administration, as the admin, do enough to highlight what these guys are out there doing for their citizens. Thank you.
Michael?
One quick question. The three guys that were caught, this is just for my curiosity, two of them were tased and one of them was caught by the canine. In your opinion, who got it worse, the tasing or the canine?
I'll take a tase over a canine bite.
Oh, that's what I was kind of wondering.
I've been tased before.
That concludes, completes committee reports. Unfinished business, Todd Bertrand update. Todd?
Just a brief update since our last session, your last session that I spoke before you. We received approximately 63 inquiries from Indiana American, Citizens Energy Group, and Aqua Indiana. Collectively, 63 inquiries. Phil and Brad were phenomenal in responding to the vast majority of those inquiries. We have a bit of a delay in the delivery of the appraisal activity. It is a very complex exercise, whereas there is a component in the inventory known as contributions of native construction or any developer-installed infrastructure that has to be captured and calculated in the overall value, appraised value of the system. Very intricate, very specialized calculation has to be congruent with the statute, and Mr. Nitsa, who has been contracted to perform that work, is, is working diligently, and I would expect by the end of this week, we would have at least a draft of his final work product to be considered. So there's a lot of question and answers between he and Brad and Phil, but rest assured, that, that number is coming, is forthcoming, and I don't know what exactly that number is of the overall value of the system, but it certainly will, is, is an integral piece. And by that pursuant to our timeline in Section 5 of the RFP, we did reserve the right to extend and modify, and so we've given the responses by the, by the individual companies till 6:28, close of business. It's the last Friday of June. So their process is, there's a corporate review panel that would review their, their proposals or any given approval to any sort of proposal, and so that's what our timeline is now. It is a little bit longer and anticipated, but if you recall, when I stood before you, I think in January, February, this was an aggressive schedule, and we articulated that. You want to make sure that this appraisal work is done and done right. So with that, I'll yield your questions.
We had appraisals done about a year ago. Are they still not, they can't go by those?
So it's my understanding that, I believe, Shrewsbury and Westler performed some appraisal work. It was before I was engaged. So the, the notion with those, those folks have not had work product considered before the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. The number that an evaluation, as I understand it, they arrived at was if they were to replace the entire system, any depreciated asset and replace the entire system for, from end to end wholesale. So as, once I became engaged, I knew that, that work product probably wouldn't hold up under scrutiny of the Office of Utility Consumer Counselor. They're there as interveners on behalf of ratepayers, and so it's, it's still, it was still value-add work because there was a lot of inventory that they captured, that is still, their work product has been considered here. But to take the, any, any value out of the system, and I say value, is the contributive, the contributive property. So the notion is ratepayers don't pay twice. If you bought a house, that, the, the cost of that infrastructure was embedded in the cost of your lot and your home, and so the, the regulatory environment in Indiana is you should not pay for that twice. Okay. So Ms. Cleveland's work, of which I've not seen, that is, she is a subject matter expert in this field, and we would use her work product as well. I've not had any contact with her. Once Ted is, is complete, what I would encourage us to do is get those two parties together. The statute spells out when two appraisers have differing numbers, they would convene and come to a number that they would agree on, and it would, would hold up under the scrutiny of the regulatory process. Well, I will yield my time.
Thank you.
Dan, one more shot. Anything?
Well, alls I'd like to say is, if we have to do another appraisal, it should be at the cost of whoever the purchasers might be.
And, and we can certainly pursue that, for sure.
Because this was third appraisal that's actually been.
We can certainly, great point, and it is not uncommon to have that done. Absolutely. Thank you all.
That concludes unfinished business under new business. 2019 zoning 040 hearing, I'll defer to city legal.
Sure, I guess, Mr. Calderon, you going to speak on behalf of the petitioner?
Yes, thanks.
Please state your name and who you represent.
No.
Yes, swear, man.
Yes, yeah. You swear from the testimony you're about to give, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Joseph Calderon, 11 South Meridian, Indianapolis. I represent the applicant, Opedan Inc., and they are developing a parcel on Victory Drive for Northern Tool and Equipment. I have just a little handout that I would like to.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm going to try to keep this simple, and in my world, that's not always the case. There's an undeveloped parcel between the La Quinta and the Holiday Inn. That's about two and a half acres that fronts on 465 and Victory Drive, just a little bit to the east of Emerson. One of the, when the property was acquired, there were three historic tax parcels, two of which are Zone C4, which is a medium designation for commercial, one of which, the subject that we're speaking of tonight, is Zoned MU1, which is a mixed-use district that came into being a few years ago under the new zoning ordinance.
Mr. Calderon, can I have you verify something first?
Yes.
Help me out just a little bit. Is the address, my understanding, and maybe someone else here can, with the attorney of my bill to help, my understanding is there's only one address unless for some reason, I'm confused from some connectivity, that actually is in the city of Beech Grove, or does it matter whether or not we're considering a property that I feel might not be in the city?
The parcel that is in question, 5230 historically, there's also 5236 and 5302. 5236, 5302 are just outside of the city limits. The parcel that we're discussing, the north parcel, and if you look at Tab 2, you can see it highlighted, is within the city limits, and that's why we are here this evening. That parcel is a half acre, and it abuts the two other parcels which are Zone C4, so.
Because I do, like, 5120. Am I right on that address for the hotel?
5120?
5120. I do know that seemed to be the, but I, I do know that address itself represents the hotel. I know it's in the city. I was just, the other addresses do to me.
Yeah. It, it's a little confusing because there's, there were three tax parcels, each with addresses assigned to them. The only one that we're speaking of this evening relates to the parcel you can see on Tab 2, which is 5230. It's a half acre. If you turn to Tab 3, it's adjacent to the highlighted parcels which are Zone C4. Northern Tool and Equipment is a retail store, kind of for do-it-yourselfers. They have high-end tools, equipment for sale, and they propose to build a facility which would include some development on the Beech Grove parcel, if you will. So our way of thinking is that it makes sense not to have different zoning classifications, to have it all zoned for the same C4 designation, and we believe that's supportable under the comprehensive plan. At the end of the day, you'll have a facility that looks like this, as you can see in Tab 5. It's about 20,000-foot retail facility, so it'll bring some jobs and activity to that vacant parcel. With that, we hope that you will recommend this favorably to the Metropolitan Development Commission. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Jay Moore from the developer is here with me tonight, as well as Dwayne Boris with the actual end user of Northern Tool, in case you have any questions. Thank you.
Are there going to be any other witnesses on behalf of the petitioner?
No, only can I answer questions.
Okay. Do we have any remonstrators? Anybody want to speak against the petition? Staff, you want to give your report?
Thank you for your record, Linda Albrand, representing the Department of Metropolitan Development. This is a rezoning of a little over half an acre from MU1 to C4. MU1 was created in 2016 and replaced the district that used to be known as C2. I went back as far as I could to try to figure out how this was zoned C2, because it's not a district that's typical near an interstate interchange. It's a high-rise apartment and office commercial district, so it doesn't really fit this area, neither does the, the current MU1 that it, that it's labeled as, as now. The C4 would make it zone the same as the rest of the parcels, parcels that are all owned by the petitioner, and would allow for the development, further development of the site. The site plan that the petitioner's representative gave you was a site plan that was submitted for a permit, Tab 4 of his exhibit, after they realized that the piece that we're talking about tonight is zoned MU1 and could not be built on. The site plan that I've included in my staff report, just before the last page, shows you how the original proposal, and I think their actual proposal, if this gets rezoned, is to move some of the pavement and development up into and around the detention pond you see there on, on the staff report. Therefore, they do need to rezone the property, so it is consistent with the remainder of their parcels. We are supportive. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
So just looking at the charts, it looks like the schematic, it's really only the retention pond or retention basin is really what's going to be within that parcel that's Beech Grove, and a little bit of parking lot?
Correct.
Okay. I was just making sure I was looking at it right.
Correct.
Any other questions for Linda? Anybody else would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the petition? All right, what we do now here if we vote, when we start down there with Buddy, either in favor of or against the petition?
In favor.
I'll vote in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Next order of new business, Resolution Number 5, 2019, concerning Okra. And at this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution. Into the record, please.
Resolution Number 5, 2019, is a resolution authorizing the submittal of the Main Street revitalization grant, application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs in addressing related matters. Whereas the Common Council of the City of Beech Grove recognizes the need to stimulate growth and to maintain a sound economy within its corporate limits, and whereas the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, authorizes the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs to provide grants to local units of government for the elimination and prevention of blight, and whereas the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, will conduct public hearings prior to the submission of an application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, said public hearings to assess the housing, public facilities and economic needs of its low and moderate-income residents. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, that the mayor is authorized to prepare and submit an application for grant funding to address facade improvements and to execute an administrative resultant grant, including requisite general administration and project management. Contracts and agreements pursuant to regulations of the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Now therefore be it further resolved, the City of Beech Grove, Indiana hereby commits the requisite local funds in the amount of $137,020 in the form of $5,000 general fund, $37,500 Beech Grove Redevelopment Commission funds, and $94,520 from the business owners as matching funds for said program. Such commitment to be contingent upon receipt of MRSP funding from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, accepted by the City of Beech Grove, Indiana this third day of June 2019 at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for motion to approve Resolution Number 5, 2019.
I make the motion to approve Resolution Number 5.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. Also, Dan, can we do a second?
Chief, can I give it to the mic?
Uh, yeah, you got one.
Yeah.
Oh, you're very good, Phil.
Next order of business is resolution number six, 2019. And I think I'll ask Counselor Lamping to read this one into the record.
Very good. Resolution number six, 2019. Resolution number six, 2019, is resolution in support of retiring the Indianapolis Power and Light Company's Petersburg Utility Plant by 2028 and replace their power source with renewable energy. Whereas in 2017, the Indianapolis City Council passed a resolution that initiated a process to reduce carbon emissions, and whereas the Indianapolis Office of Sustainability has made the year 2050 as the guideline to have renewable energy in place, and whereas a good first step would be for the Indianapolis Power and Light Company to retire the Petersburg Utility Plant by 2028. And whereas in 2018, NIPSCO, located in northwest Indiana, announced an historic transition to clean energy and retire their old power plant. Now therefore be affirmed that the Common Council believes that the Indianapolis Power and Light Company can be a national leader in investing in clean, affordable energy while boosting local economic development and job opportunities. Now therefore be further ordained that the undersigned members of the Common Council for the City of Beech Grove ask that our friends at the Indianapolis Power and Light Company create plans to replace the Petersburg Utility Plant with clean renewable energy.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for motion to approve resolution number six, 2019.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Next order of business is an email from Tim Scholwaller. Says that I now have the capability of live streaming the council meetings over the internet. The only thing we would need is a network cable run upstairs to the room my equipment is located in. Meetings could be streamed over YouTube and linked to the city's website, or over Facebook, possibly the Parks Department's page, or any other internet site we would choose. Please let me know your thoughts. Signed, Tim Scholwaller. I just brought it on the agenda tonight to open it up to see if you folks would like to do that, and like for him to proceed with that, so we can get another way of getting these notes out.
I think it's a great idea, but I would hate to stream Beech Grove Council meetings with these cameras from 2008. I think, you know, sometimes Beech Grove already has somewhat of a poor name to itself to use, you know, whatever it be, 480p cameras to stream on YouTube that's capable of 4K. I think we need to get Tim some better cameras.
I thought Tim looked into that, didn't he, Dan?
I thought these were newer cameras. I thought he just bought these within the last...
I... Are they new?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Tommy.
I was with you. I hadn't actually looked at it myself. I thought they were the old ones.
Oh, I know. I mean, I guess, yeah, maybe I didn't realize they were new, but...
Okay, then, yeah, they're new, yeah. I'm all for it.
I'll just ask for input, and I'm not sure what the cost would be.
I was gonna say, is there any cost?
I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's definitely cost, but...
But it's for the streaming part?
I think it's...
Shouldn't be a whole lot.
I don't know about any of that. That's something Tim probably should come talk to us about, and let us know what, you know, he can get estimates on what it costs to run the wire.
I'll have him come in July and talk to you.
Right.
But he put that out there, and I wanted to share it with you.
Now, I can help you run the wire. I got a ladder at home. It's not gonna be that tough.
Just run it like a clothesline.
It's gonna go up and through the ceiling tiles.
Last order of business, under new business, consulting agreement, Todd Betron, and I'll defer to city legal. Todd?
So, members of council, you know, my first tranche of consulting was through March 31st, so I've been continuing the project management through today's date. So, I wrote the contract. You approved it initially. If you want me to exit stage left, happy to do so. Like to see it through to the end and at least the fact-finding for your next decision, but you have that agreement in front of you for your consideration.
The consulting agreement is virtually identical from the one that we approved.
Correct, it is. The only change is if the council decides to move forward into a transaction, and this contract runs at the end of the regulatory approval, up or down.
You've worked without a contract for April and May?
Correct, sir.
And you don't want to continue to do so?
I would work for free, but my wife will not let me.
Hello, going up to the council. And just remember, and I think Todd's made this perfectly clear, that at any time that you do not want to proceed with this, all you have to vote is to stop. His work has been invaluable, and I would like to see him continue.
Can we not go month to month? We have to do three months? I think they're still languishing at thirty days, that either party notifies one another thirty days. I just didn't want to come back to you month after month. Once you get into the regulatory process, managing the process, it's subject to the regulatory calendar. So, I wrote it, kind of, it would straddle both sides of the fence.
So, once we get the appraisal, the end of June, that's gonna tell us a lot, and that timeline...
Yeah, so the appraisal, and once you receive the bids, we'll go through that process at that point in time, because we'll review those bids. What do the rates look like under a different ownership than the city's, comparing to what rates will be under continued ownership of the cities? Also, with considering the rate increase that was approved, I believe, in 2017 by the commission to the satellite entities serviced by Citizens Energy Group, or CWA. So, at that point in time, end of June, July into August, you're gonna have a pretty clear picture as a council, what step you want to take. You're gonna get bids, you're gonna see what rates are gonna look like, and you'll be able to make a decision from there. I will say, there comes a time after negotiation, there's gonna be a point in that transaction, if you proceed, there's gonna be a point of no return. You're subject to the approval of the regulatory process. So, you're gonna know, you're gonna know in the next ninety-plus days what you're going
So, I do have a question. So, once those bids come in and we move, if we feel that those are reasonable, acceptable offers, and we move to say, for instance, either sell it or we back out, what would be your role in those next steps? Would you have a role, and we would have to continue to have you on board? Or is that something that Craig and the city could take from there?
So, my role in that process will be to continue to manage the process, interacting with Craig and any other... You're gonna reach a point where, I believe Craig would speak to this, you're gonna have to have regulatory legal representation in that process, so collecting the data from the bidders, or your participant, and interfacing and managing that project with your legal team into the regulatory process.
One thing just I would like, I mean, I know within here it says that, you know, the liability of the consultant is, you know, item six. As we move towards this kind of last step of the RFP process, that if you can maybe update us more often, rather than the monthly meetings?
Sure, absolutely.
If you were to have like a bid come in or something like that?
I can communicate via email. Obviously, I've reached out to you all before, so absolutely.
Because we're really getting into the meat of the process, you know?
Yeah, you're gonna get into, we're gonna get into, if you decide to proceed in negotiation, you're gonna get into rate review, how does it impact? There are no employee transfers. That's a benefit here, so that's always, usually a material item that becomes very emotional, very important. So, I can provide as many updates as you would like as we move through that process, if you decide to cross into that.
And uncommon, too, you know, if there was, like you said, if the appraisal needs, it's gonna cost X amount of dollars, and the buyer or prospective buyer wants to pay for it, let them pay for it.
Not uncommon, not uncommon. The notion with that is, if the purchaser, because they would expect a reimbursement if the transaction were not to go through, there is no substitute for your own autonomy and not being subject to a potential buyer's, I guess, purse strings. So, we can certainly discuss that as we move forward, if you move forward.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Provided, I thought we were already going to have what the offers would be at this time, and who's actually interested of what dollar amount. Let's say the end of June, we get a $10 offer or a $50 million offer. At what point would they hire you for? After we know what the offer is, or right now?
Who's "they"?
As far as...
You said, what point do "they" hire me for?
The council. Like to do this agreement. I mean, I personally, as a taxpayer, do not want to pay until I know if they're offering $10 or $50 million. Whether it's a deal that we can move forward on, or it's a deal we can't.
Yeah, so again, 6/28, and as I explained earlier why the delay, at that point in time, we'll have those offers, and we'll have a good idea, is this worth pursuing or not? I'm cognizant of the cost, and from that standpoint, if you get to, when we get to June 28th, and it's not gonna be exactly June 28th, as you know, it's close of business, so the weeks thereafter convene, the council, like, you know, this is not the right thing to do, the value's not there, it's not what we expected, at that point in time, you're gonna make a decision that we're done, and then that means I'm done.
But I guess what I'm asking you, are you wanting this agreement effective as of tonight, or after the June 28th, when we know what the, if there's any interest out there whatsoever?
Well, I would recommend this evening, as it's already been noted, I've been operating without a contract in good faith in April and May. I think that is, you know, I'm committed to this project and seeing it through, to the extent that the council wants to see it through. After that point in time, if this is not gonna be pursued, my work here is done. Unless you want me to come back every month, because you think I'm a cool guy.
I like...
Oh, they kidding?
Questions?
I know you like that. So, maybe I'll rewrite that. The number of questions that Dan asked me, I get... No, I'm kidding.
Well, number seven, it says either party can discontinue the agreement at any time.
Yeah, sell them when you see a professional service contract thirty days at a time. I mean, I think that shows you my willingness to operate with a little bit of risk.
I have a question, Doctor. Is this another one of those $3,000 a month or a ninety-day contract, and forty...
So, my fee is not changed?
It's $3,000 a month.
I'm gonna vote yes if we continue. I mean, we've went this far, and it would be irresponsible, I think, to stop it, and I don't say this because I'm in favor of selling anything or not selling anything. We've just come to a, this has been talked about for many years, what this whole project is, and I think we finally need to find out what the answers are, and I think they're costly to get there, but at least we all know where we're at, so I just wanted to make that statement.
And we've been in it long enough that we have, we need to find out what's gonna be offered. If it's gonna be feasible for the City of Beech Grove to sell it or not, and I think we should go ahead with the contract.
Does that motion?
I'll make motion to approve the contract.
I'll second.
Okay, me doing it.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Betron.
That concludes new business. Comments from council members, starting on my left, Buddy?
I just wanted to, some of the comments, Dan made in his report, financial report, just making it clear how important it is that every dollar, maybe every penny in that case, that we're aware of and how it's spent, and which is one of the nice things about city government, most of it you can see. Also, wanted to thank the deputy chief for coming up here and speaking to us. We get these reports from the police department every month, and there's a lot of information in there, and it's kind of, I think, important and probably more meaningful to have the chief or deputy chief to come up at least every once in a while and kind of relay these. And I wanted to say something, I know I linger on a lot, but just the fact of something that's not on the report, an officer pulling over a car any time of day, having no idea what to expect until he makes his approach, just that one thing, and add up all the other things the police officers have to come upon without even knowing what the risks are, that's enough to put in a report, but it would be meaningless. You wouldn't understand what it meant, and I certainly appreciate the report, and even the things that every day, just a matter of wearing the uniform and walking into a store, you don't know if the bad guy's already done his actions, and he's gonna see your badge, and it's just wearing it alone is a tough, responsible, and we do very well here in our city. I was gonna say something about, to Todd, but I already made that comment, and I thank Kim for coming up and talking to us as well. And with that, I have nothing further.
I'd like to say I appreciate the police, fire, and our DOT. People in Beech Grove should be very fortunate to have those three groups working for us. The police department, once in a while, was stopping, I seen on Facebook, I know Maurice does not check Facebook, where one of our police officers stopped and changed a tire for a lady.
Oh, yeah.
And he didn't have to do that, but our police officers are very good people, and the fire department the same way, and our DOT. I also like to remind everybody, June 14th and 15th at the high school, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and 3 o'clock Saturday is a relay for life, that's to kick cancer in the butt. Come and join us.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I just have one question for Buddy. Are your comments pre-done, or is that just off the cuff?
I'm curious about the new tire-changing program at the police department right now. Thank you.
That's all I got.
No, thanks, Chief Maurice, for, you know, what you said, that really kind of hit home, which I think all of us, made everybody in the crowd kind of open their eyes. It's nice to hear those comments. Also, really looking forward to this Grand Prix. I don't know about many of the fathers out there in the crowd, but it is Father's Day, and I've already asked my wife if that's what I can do for Father's Day, so I'll be out there all day.
Did she say yes?
She's still on the fence, but we'll see.
I just want to give a note of recognition to my friends from the Sierra Club for their support here for the resolution six, 2019. Anything that we can do as a community together that will work and do good things for our environmental wellness is a positive, and the Sierra Club works hard, and they have changed the powerful to do better for our well-being as far as the environment and our air that we breathe. Thank you so much. Thanks.
I just want to thank everyone for coming. I have a couple items, counsel. I want to read an email from our operations chief of the fire department. In the very near future, the IU Health Stroke Medic will start responding to Beech Grove for potential stroke patients. If you remember, they are in service every other week, and you will hear Stroke Medic One dispatch along with you. If you arrive on a scene and the patient is not having stroke systems, then please disregard... If you arrive on a scene and the patient is not having stroke systems, then please disregard them. However, if the patient does exhibit stroke, stroke systems, or in your opinion they are having a stroke, allow them to continue in, and you can transfer care to them upon their arrival. This will allow the patient to receive immediate treatment on scene, including a CAT scan. So, that's a very nice program. On June 20th, at the Hornet Park, at 7:00 PM, we will have another town hall conversation to discuss ways to pay for the construction of a new police and fire station. Consultants will make presentations concerning the following options to pay for this investment. One is the sale of the sanitary sewer utility. Two, lease purchase option. Three, Tiff Bonds Building Corporation and separate taxing district. So, there will be folks that will come and talk about these options for you. I think Buddy did, and I think there was a couple more counselors, wanted to have other options besides the sale of the sewer utility. So, that's going to be made available June 20th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Hornet Park Community Center. This is a note that went out to area businesses at Churchman, Bypass, and Arlington. As you have probably observed, Citizens Energy Group is preparing to move some natural gas lines in preparation of the roundabout construction, which is set for later this summer. As a result of this, there will be some road closures that could directly affect you. I have included the notices from Citizens Energy Group for your information. Point person for this project is Jay Fanning, and he could be reached at his email address should you have any questions or concerns. I'm very sorry for this inconvenience, but this is a very important part of the roundabout construction. The Big Four Road out there by Kinetics is going to be closed from June 10th to the 28th. And that if you drive in that area, you see some great big natural gas lines, and they have to move them away from the intersection of Churchman, Bypass, and Arlington. And here's a drawing, the first drawing on the project. The City of Beach Grove will be receiving $1,533,000 from NDOT and the Indianapolis Metropolitan Planning Organization for a health and safety improvement project for the construction of a roundabout in the area of 25th, Churchman Southern, and Perkins. As most know, over the years, these intersections have had several traffic accidents, and some unfortunately were very critical. We invite everyone to attend a ceremonial check presentation on June 13th at 11:00 AM in the parking lot of the old gas station located at 25th and Churchman Avenue. The project is slated for construction anytime after July 1st, 2022. We wanted to get that out for public conception. So, that concludes the remarks. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned, and I, Dan, I don't know what time it is.
8:19.
Thank you. Better known as 8:20.